I'd like to call this evening's meeting to order, just a few minutes off the mark at 6:06. Forgive the technical issues. First item on the agenda is roll call. DiOrio present?
Lyndell present.
Shimshini present.
John Penney Packer present.
Debo here for the Conservation Commission.
Good, outstanding. Sounds like we're all here. Our next item on the agenda is a pre-roll, prospective member attendance for the July 7th regular meeting. DiOrio, I plan to be here.
Keith Lindelof planning to be attend.
Lyte, I am on board for that meeting.
Anyone else out there?
This is Emily. Sorry, we had some trouble unmuting. I will plan to attend July 7th.
Al?
Yes.
I just wanted to let you know I'm here. This is Sharon. Thank you.
Sharon, welcome aboard. Always a pleasure. Okay, anybody else who care?
John Penney Packer will plan to attend. I'm also having difficulty with the mute toggle.
Okay, very good. I'll try and allow a little bit of extra time for the tech issues. Very good, thank you for that. Next item under is Old Business. There is one item, it's a preliminary planned public informational hearing, a four lot, seven unit, major land development project, Fairview Estates, AP 18 lot 7K 66, Fairview Avenue Shoreline Properties, Inc., applicant. Is the applicant in or their representative present this evening?
Yes.
Yes, Jeff Cafrey here on behalf of the applicant. I believe Jill Cattelli is here as well as Patrick Freeman of American Engineering. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes, this is Talia. I have asked him to unmute. He has not yet done so. I also, I'm not sure if Mr. Cattelli is going to be joining us via phone or computer. Do you know, Mr. Cafrey?
I just spoke to him a few moments ago. He was going to attempt to join us, but he was running a little bit late.
Okay.
So, that being said, good evening once again. Thank you for taking the time out to hear our continuation of our preliminary planned meeting. As I'm sure you recall, two weeks ago, when last we spoke, we had resolved what I believe to be the majority of the issues. And to my recollection, the sole remaining issue was how we were going to address the maintenance of the stormwater facilities. And I had submitted to Attorney Hogan a proposed draft of a maintenance agreement that I received some feedback on today from Jim Lambfair, which I assume was circulated to all the other planning board members. Has everybody seen the proposed maintenance agreement?
Al DiOrio, so if I may, the latest document that I printed out unfortunately has no date or annotation that allows me to identify which document we're looking at. So I reviewed several. Let's just for the record, try and be clear which document we all may be looking at. By whichever handle you'd like to identify it.
Well, Jim Lambfair had circulated a redlined copy of my original draft, which is what I have in front of me. But unfortunately, I'd have no way of comparing what I have to what the members of the board have in front of them. Did everybody get Jim's circulation?
Al DiOrio, I do not have a redlined anything on the latest copy that I printed out.
So you would have the cleaned up version. Does the cleaned up version that you have have 11 paragraphs?
That's going to be the identifier. Yes, it does.
Okay.
Do any of the preceding documents have 11 items?
The previous ones that I had had an improperly numbered paragraph nine, and that was part of the redline comments from Jim. So I believe if you've got the one with 11 enumerated paragraphs, that should be what Jim circulated as the final draft.
Okay, so can we agree that the document that has 11 items is the one that we should all be looking at?
That's fine with me, yes.
So I'm going to reach out, and I'm sorry, before you proceed, I'm going to reach out to my planning board members. Does everybody have a document with 11 items on it? Jimmy's shaking.
I don't have that document.
Yeah, Jim Lambfair Town Planner. I basically communicated with Maggie, our solicitor, on this. And so I sent it out to Mr. DiOrio this afternoon, Maggie, and Attorney Cafrey. And I, again, as correctly pointed out, I made the annotation here to change number nine to 11. So that is, that is the latest document. I did receive a comment from Solicitor Hogan on it that item number 11 is not acceptable. So that could be a good starting point there. And I also want to make a minor typo in, on the first page, in the fifth whereas, it has welfare of the residents, and it's spelled D-E-N-C-E. I think they meant to say residence, E-N-T-S. So that's a minor typo there, so we can correct that, but...
So Al DiOrio again, so Jim, is it fair to say that with the exception of this 11th item, do my planning board colleagues have a document that is almost similar to the final version? Just so, just so we can all talk about the same thing.
Yes, Jim Lambfair Town Planner. I believe that the planning board might not have, again, because my communications were basically between myself and the solicitor to work out the details of this, I did not include the whole planning board in this discussion.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if the planning board has number four and five, which were added by Crosman Engineering stating that the grass should be mowed at least four times a year and that septic system's got to be inspected annually. Those two are additions from, I believe, what the planning board has. They were suggested by Crosman, like I said, and incorporated by Patrick Freeman into this document. And so with the addition of those two items, then that brought us up to a total of 11, 11 items.
Okay, so Al DiOrio, I'm still wrestling a little bit. I'm reluctant to engage in a discussion about a document that no one has in front of me. So...
Correct.
Do the planning board members have some versions?
No.
Okay, so then I would be suggesting we start at the beginning. Let's go through them, paragraph at a time. I know it's going to be laborious, but I don't, this is an important document. I don't see how we can legitimately discuss it if nobody knows what it says. So, can we do that?
Do we have the opportunity to have that document emailed to us now?
I'm going to leave that to the techno wizards. That might be a little bit beyond our capabilities, given the fact that we're all actively engaged.
Okay, then we should just move forward.
Okay, this is John. Just a question regarding this. Is the most recent version in the documents provided on the town's website? And if so, can you identify the name of the file?
Jim Lambfair Town Planner, I don't believe, because this document was a work in progress since the last meeting, and it really didn't come together until the last minute, being this afternoon, actually. No, I don't believe it is on the website.
Mr. Chairman, can you guys hear me tonight?
Yes, Maggie, welcome.
Oh, great. Hi, thank you. So I have it, it came in, it's like 2:47 this afternoon. I will forward it to everyone by email, okay? Obviously, I can't put it on the town website, but I can certainly forward it to everybody by email. And just a little background, the genesis of this document is, if you recall the last meeting, we were directed to talk to, I was directed as solicitor to talk with applicants' council about how we could work out the concerns that the commission, pardon me, the board had at the last meeting. I did suggest that a form of the maintenance, of a maintenance agreement be submitted, and that, you know, the current owner of the property actually enter into that agreement, and that the requirement for that agreement continuously would be also in the board's decision. One thing, and we can get to it, number 11 on the document, I believe the intent is that the applicant would be able to, you know, discharge, if you will, the vendor that selected for this process and select a new vendor. And if that's the intent of that paragraph, then we can work out the details of it. But otherwise, I could discuss those, the concerns when we get there. But, so let me send to all of you now, Al and...
Yep, Maggie, that's very nice. I really appreciate that. If planning board members could just alert me to when they receive this, we can engage in, I think, a more legitimate discussion. I apologize to the audience that you will not be privy to this document. It is, it is between the planning board and the applicant, but nonetheless, we normally try and post these things that didn't get done. I apologize.
That's, it's unfortunate, it's the nature of remote meetings, you know, where a document's finalized on a day of the hearing would normally be handed out at the hearing, but here we are.
The evolutionary documents, yes.
Yes, and... There it goes.
Maggie, just to be clear, that's the 11 paragraph document?
Yes, and you received it this afternoon at 2:47 PM?
Yes, I have that, yeah.
Okay. Steve Cabral, Daniel Carter, Al DiOrio, and Talia should also have the same document.
Yes.
This is Carolyn. This is Carolyn. I'm in receipt of Maggie's email.
Okay, great.
Same, Emily.
Keith Lindelof got it.
So it's not too onerous to read through it. It's, you know, it's only a couple of pages, and it is, it's the most crucial issue that you guys were concerned with at the last meeting, so... And Al, when you get to it, I'm not sure that you really need to read the first page of all the whereas's, you know? We all know what the whereas's, you know, we're trying to work out. It's the therefore they agree as follows, I think, is the important part that you'd want to discuss.
So Maggie, just give me a little guidance here. It sounds like most of the planning board members are in receipt, acknowledging that the audience is not.
Yes.
Do you recommend that I read items one through 11?
Yes, and I would think that if any members of, as you read through them, if any member of the commission, I'm sorry, board, you know, has any concerns or questions, that we address them paragraph by paragraph. That would seem to make the most sense.
Okay, that's very good. Planning board members, you're all on board with that? So as I go through the paragraphs, if you have comments or concerns, let's just stop me after number one, for example, and we'll talk about it.
If I, is it okay if the applicant raises any questions as we go through it as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Okay, that said, let me begin. I am beginning on page one. At the bottom of the page, the opening paragraph said, says now, therefore in consideration of the foregoing premises, the mutual covenants contained herein and the following terms and conditions, the parties here to agree as follows. Item number one, the onsite stormwater management facility shall be constructed by the owner, its successors, and assigns in accordance with the plans and specifications identified in the stormwater system operation and maintenance plan, which is attached here too as Exhibit A. Comments, concerns, thoughts? Hearing none.
We don't have...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Don't have Exhibit A. I just wanted to point that out.
That, that I believe is on the website. Am I correct, Jim?
I'm not, I'm not certain about that, but I believe it is.
That's the DEM, yes.
I think it was from, it probably was from the prior meeting.
Yeah.
We have seen it.
Okay. Stormwater management plan is item number four under Old Business on the website.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you. Item number two, the owner, its successors, and assigns, including any homeowners association, hereby contract with Shallvey, I hope I have that right, for the purpose of ensuring the maintenance of the stormwater management facilities in accordance with the required stormwater system operation and maintenance plan. Let me just digress here for a moment. Shallvey was previously alluded to as Shallvey Brothers Landscaping, Inc., earlier in the document. You don't have the benefit of that. Continuing, this includes all catch basins, sediment forbays, sand filter, infiltration basin, infiltration practices, rain gardens, dry extended detention pond, maintenance access road, pipes, channels, or other conveyances built to convey stormwater to the facility, as well as any structures, improvements, and vegetation provided to control the quality, I'm sorry, quantity and quality of the stormwater. Adequate maintenance is herein defined as good working conditions so that these facilities are performing their design functions. The stormwater best management practices, operation, maintenance, and management checklists are to be used to establish what good working condition is acceptable to the town of Hopkinton. Comments, thoughts? Hearing none. Item number three, on an annual or biannual basis, depending upon the system component, and after storms with greater than 2.7 inches of precipitation, Shallvey shall inspect the stormwater management facility. The purpose of the inspection is to ensure safe and proper functioning of the facilities. The inspection shall cover the entire facilities, berms, outlet structure, basin areas, access roads, et cetera. Deficiency, deficiencies shall be noted in the inspection report and immediately repaired. Any required maintenance as set forth in the stormwater system operation and maintenance plan shall be performed by Shallvey. Thoughts or comments?
What does Shallvey do with the, I'm sorry, Keith, there. What do they do with the report once they've done it?
I believe that needs to be submitted to the town. Somewhere in here.
I think that we should insert that into that paragraph somewhere.
So number six, last sentence. No, pardon me, that's not correct.
That would be the town. Yeah, let's just put in here a sentence that says Shallvey shall submit a copy of the inspection report to the town. Actually, let's say to the town planning department, so it doesn't get sent to the finance director. Good comment. Item number four.
I, oh, this is John.
All right, go ahead, go ahead.
One other thing, it leads with on annual or biannual basis, is this up to, who gets to decide if this is every year or every other year?
Depending upon the system component, Al DiOrio.
Who gets to decide which system component is every other year versus every year? Is that enumerated later? I'm just seeing this.
No, it's a good question.
That's, I believe that's set forth in this, the operation and maintenance plan, and then you would look to the best management practices checklists.
Thank you.
Okay, we continue. Item number four. Grass around the perimeter of each basin and sand filter system shall be mowed at least four times per year. Catch basin cleaning and street sweeping shall be performed annually. Lots of comments.
Yeah, Keith, here, I'll go. Should we define what, we don't want four times in the month of June and then not the rest of the year. I think we need to define not more than once a quarter or something like that, or I don't know how we define which four times per year they are.
That's a good point.
Do you have a recommendation?
I would say not more than once per quarter, maybe, I guess.
Well, I don't think you're going to be mowing in the winter, right? So...
True.
Can you call it the growing season?
Perfect.
This is Carolyn.
Four times, four times per growing season?
Al DiOrio, I heard the answer in there, four times per growing season.
If you need to establish the growing season, you can call it March to October.
Yeah, I was just about to say, if you just, if you just want to specify, shall be mowed in April, June, August, and October. Done.
Works for me.
Go, very good. Excellent comment. Thank you. Anything else on four? Item number five, septic systems are to be inspected annually to ensure proper operation.
Al, I've got an issue with that. That's Jeff Cafrey. I'm not sure why septic system always led me to part of the stormwater facility maintenance agreement. That's something that Steve added. I mean, the septic systems are designed to be contained within each individual property owner's lot. So why that would become an obligation is, I think, outside the scope of the agreement.
Well, Al DiOrio, I have to profess that the same thought crossed my mind, so perhaps there's an explanation in there somewhere that escapes me.
Is Steve on the line?
This is Talia. Steve is on the line. I'm going to promote him to the panelists, and then he will be able to weigh in on that.
Yes, oh, hello, this is Steve, and can you all hear me?
Yes.
Oh, and actually, I agree with the comments. The only reason I inserted that is when I went through the maintenance agreement, all I did was make sure every item within the stormwater O&amp;M was included in the maintenance agreement, and the septic system annual inspection was actually included in the DEM-approved stormwater O&amp;M.
Would that be for a septic system that serves like a public component of this as opposed to the private homeowner lots?
You know what? I agree. I normally would not have added it. All I did was make sure what was in the approved document was included here. So maybe Patrick, would be best to explain why that was included.
So typically, those conventional systems, I believe they're inspected every three time, every three years, I want to say. Maybe a typo or a copy from another project that was used, advanced treatment systems. So I could, I could...
I bet you that's what it is. Yep.
Yeah, I, again, this is Steve Cabral. I have no objection to removing that. Again, I just wanted to make sure this was all encompassing.
I think that the, my recommendation would be to remove this from this particular agreement, and you could include triennial inspection of septic systems as one of the conditions of approval over all of the plan, and outside the scope of this particular maintenance agreement. That way, it's a, it's a requirement of the particular homeowner and not the homeowner association.
Yep, very good, thank you. Steve, I appreciate your comprehensive approach. I'm, Al DiOrio, I'm perfectly okay with removing this. With regards to the inspection every three years, to the best of my knowledge, Hopkinton does not have such a program. So I'm reluctant to impose such inspections on these homeowners when no one else in town is doing that.
Quite well taken.
If I'm mistaken and I've missed a beat, someone please correct me. I'm certainly not opposed to inspecting septic systems, but it doesn't really make a lot of sense to have a couple of people in town doing it and nobody else does.
Okay. Oh, if I may, this is Steve Cabral. I, what Al described is certainly true, but one thing that many residents in Rhode Island don't realize is that DEM actually has a document that recommends routine septic inspections, and a homeowner with a septic system is obligated to perform the inspections. Unfortunately, there's no public educational process to make the homeowners aware. So one benefit is that this would actually be informing the residents that there is a requirement at the state level, but no one's aware of it.
This is Carolyn.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. This is Carolyn. I think, I think maybe the homeowners association could cover that in their bylaws or whatever they're going to put together. It sounds like a good place for it.
Yeah, I would have no objection including that in the homeowners association documents. We just don't want to put a burden on any individual property on a, any different than that which is endured by the rest of the town.
Yeah, okay, right.
Okay. Oh, but one, again, Steve Cabral, one comment I want to make to the applicant is that the septic system inspection is part of the approved DEM permit. So even though the town planning board may not require it, they are obligated based upon their DEM permit.
And Steve, is that every three years?
I believe that's how it was written. Oh, no, actually, the way it was written and approved by DEM is annually.
So, so Al DiOrio, why don't we, why don't we do a suggestion here? Let's let the DEM approval stand as is, and it'll be up to somebody to read through the documents and flesh that out. I don't see why it has to be in the maintenance agreement.
Okay.
Agreed.
Thank you, Al.
Can we all decide that we're on board with that idea?
Yes.
So I'm not voiding the DEM condition. Steve points out that that must be adhered to, but I don't think the planning board needs to be involved. Item number six.
Which will now be item number five.
Thank you. The owner, its successors, and assigns hereby grant permission to the town of Hopkinton and to other relevant enforcement authorities, their authorized agents and employees, to enter upon the property and to inspect the stormwater management facilities whenever the town deems necessary. The purpose of the inspection is to follow up on reported deficiencies and/or to respond to citizen complaints. The town shall provide the owner, its successors, and assigns copies of the inspection findings and a directive to commence with repairs if necessary. Comments or thoughts? Hearing none. Item number seven in the document now renumbered to item six. In the event that the owner and/or the homeowners association, their heirs, executors, successors, and assigns fail to maintain the stormwater management facilities in good working condition acceptable to the town, the town may enter upon the property and take whatever steps necessary to correct deficiencies identified in their inspection report and to charge the cost of such repairs, including but not limited to reasonable attorney's fees, to the owner and/or the homeowners association, their heirs, executors, successors, and assigns jointly and/or severally. This provision shall not be construed to allow the town to erect any structure of permanent nature on the land of the owner outside of the easement for the stormwater management facilities. It is expressly understood and agreed that the town is under no obligation to routinely maintain or repair said facilities, and in no event shall this agreement be construed to impose any such obligation on the town. Thoughts, comments? Hearing none. Item number eight on the document now renumbered to number seven, the owner, its successors and assigns will perform the work necessary to keep these facilities in good working order as appropriate. In the event a maintenance schedule for the stormwater management facilities, including sediment removal, is outlined on the approved plan, the schedule will be followed. Comments, thoughts? Hearing none. Item number nine on the document renumbered to number eight. In the event the town pursuant to this agreement performs work of any nature or expends any funds in performance of said work for labor... performance of said work for labor, use of equipment, supplies, materials, and the like, the owner, its successors, and assigns shall reimburse the town upon demand within 30 days of receipt thereof for all actual costs incurred by the town hereunder. If payment is not made, the town of Hopkinson shall have the right to place a lien on the declarant, its successors, and assigns, including the Fairview Estates Homeowners Association, and any and all lots in the subdivision, which lien shall be jointly and severally due to the town." Comments or thoughts? Hearing none. Item number 10 on the document renumbered to number nine. "This agreement imposes no liability of any kind whatsoever on the town, and the owner agrees to hold the town harmless from any liability in the event a stormwater management facilities fail to operate properly." Comments or thoughts? And item number 11 on the document now renumbered to number 10. "This agreement may be terminated by either party upon providing 30 days' advance notice to the other, at which point all obligations of the parties shall effectively cease."
So.
I'm sure there'd be comments or thoughts.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just have Mr. Caffey confirm what the intent of that item was. I read it quickly at first, and I thought, you know, that's a nonstarter. And then I read it again, and I thought, I think this is intended to, if the particular vendor arrangement is not working out, it can be terminated, and the homeowners association can select a new vendor. But I'd like Mr. Caffey to tell us if that's what that, he's intending that to mean.
Sure, yeah, exactly. We didn't want to be locked into an open-ended contract with Shelby, and I'm sure they probably don't want to be locked into an open-ended contract with us. So we wanted the mechanism to be able to terminate the contract if either party was dissatisfied.
So, Al and members of the board, my suggestion is that you could, in fact, then leave this particular paragraph in this agreement, but then in the approval, include something along the lines of the homeowners association shall at all times have an enforceable signed copy of the stormwater facility maintenance agreement.
Yep, Al DiOrio, listen, I'm, I'm okay with those approaches. My only concern would be to add on to Maggie's idea with some kind of language that in the event that the owner discharges, I'll use that term, this particular landscaping group and contracts with another, the town needs to have a copy of that new agreement and needs to be advised that this actually happened. And it should probably be within a certain number of days of the release of one and the inclusion of the other, just so that the town is in the loop and nothing is happening in the dark.
So I've got a proposal there. The homeowners association shall be obligated to notify the town within 30 days of any change to the vendor on the maintenance agreement and to provide a copy thereof.
Outstanding.
This is John. Just to further, okay, just to further cement this, is there not an opportunity to reword that? Because just by virtue of saying this agreement, that by, if anyone who reads this is going to say this refers to the, the document which has agreement in the title. Instead of saying this agreement, can it be changed to saying, you know, the contract with the, with Shelby or the maintenance provider be terminated? Because that, I think that uses more plain language.
I'm comfortable with that, if that, if that works for you. This undertaking or something of that nature.
This is Emily. I thought the same thing, but then when I saw the signature lines, and it's really just an agreement between the landscape vendor and the owner, then I realized, you know, that's what this agreement is between, and they're talking about the town and their actions towards the town. So the town's not really agreeing to this. It's just the two of them.
Correct. And there's an obligation, there'll be an obligation in the order that at all times they have to have an effective vendor contract for stormwater facility management, maintenance, pardon me.
This is John. Thank you. That, that clears it up.
Okay, any other thoughts about this document, planning board members?
This is Carolyn. My, my only question mark on this is that Shelby would have to agree to whatever fees may be determined. And, you know, before I would sign an agreement like that, I would, I would want to talk about the money. So how did we get to the point where Shelby agreed to be named as a participant in this agreement?
Al DiOrio, I, I would envision this kind of document showing up when folks record their final plans and legal documents. I don't think the town should be a party to the fees. That's not really our business. We care about the fact that the landscaping group is in agreement with the owner.
Yeah, I, I personally don't care about the fees or the cost or any of that other nonsense. I'm, I'm just not on good footing with this being Shelby Brothers Landscaping being named in the final document. That could change at the end of the day. So as a blueprint, if we just took out the Shelby Brothers Landscaping, because they, for all intents and purposes, are or might not be, you know, just that, that's my point. I'll, I'll move on. Thank you.
Al DiOrio, I understand, but quite candidly, if they came in at the final with this document executed by another landscape company, do we really care? They've, they've already made a change, and they've abided by the conditions of the agreement, which is, here's a copy, and we're notifying you of a change. I don't know. I would, I would be okay with that myself. Any other thoughts? Hearing none. So, Al DiOrio, this, this was, as I recall, one of the last, perhaps the last outstanding element in our discussions on this project. So, planning board members, if there's anything else we need to talk about, we are at a preliminary plan. This would be the time to bring it up.
Please recall also that based upon our discussions a few weeks ago, that this is also on the agenda later on for final plan approval.
Yes, thank you. This is also a continuation of a public informational hearing. So after we go through the incantations of the planning board members, the plan of the solicitor will be reaching out to the public should there be any last minute comments on this application.
This is Emily. I'm just looking over the draft motion that we've been provided by our solicitor for this. And there's a provision in there, I think it's labeled G, under the order, the areas of no cut buffer that have been cleared, yada, 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 question marks. It's kind of an incomplete sentence. And I think we talked about this during the last meeting, and I just wanted to put it out there and make sure everyone agrees before we kind of finish that sentence when we read this motion eventually. We talked about, you know, that those areas within the no cut buffer that might have been cleared are already beginning to naturally revegetate. I believe it was Mr. Freeman that showed us some pictures and images of the natural revegetation occurring in some fairly, you know, four to five foot, maybe even six foot trees already in that area. So I had sort of made a note here just to say, to change that provision to say, in areas of the no cut buffer that have been cleared, will, they will be allowed to continue to naturally revegetate. And so I just wanted to raise that in case anyone had any thoughts.
That's why I left it in red, because I was not clear as to whether you had reached consensus on that.
Al DiOrio, that is my recollection. I'm perfectly okay with the way Emily has laid that out.
The applicant has no objection either.
Planning board members, anything else that you'd like to add on this? Okay, let's go around. Jim, anything from your end?
Nothing.
Maggie, anything else to add on your end?
I think we're buttoned up.
Nice. How about our conservation group?
Yeah, Al, we're okay with the plan so far.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So with that said, if there's anyone else in the audience that wishes to offer last minute comments on this preliminary plan, this would be your opportunity.
This is Talia. If any members of the public would like to comment, please press star nine to raise your hand. And then when I direct the usage to star six. We don't have any hands raised.
Okay, no hands. So, planning board members, this puts us in a position where I'm prepared to entertain a motion should someone feel so inclined.
This is Emily. I'll move to approve Shoreline Properties Inc.'s application for preliminary plan for a major cluster subdivision located at 66 Fairview Avenue, AP 18, Lot 7K, for a total of four lots with seven residential dwelling units, based on the following findings of fact and conclusions of law. So under findings of fact, one, Shoreline Properties Inc. is the applicant and owner of the subject property by deed recorded in book 575, page 462. Number two, on January 6th, 2021, the Hopkinson Planning Board granted a waiver of section 9.2.2 of the Land Development and Subdivision Regulations and granted master plan approval with conditions. Said master plan approval was recorded on January 20th, 2021, in the Hopkinson Land Evidence Records at book 589, page 4. Number three, the findings of fact of the master plan approval are incorporated herein by reference. Number four, on March 15th, 2021, the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management's Office of Water Resources issued an insignificant alteration permit, number 21-0015, and RIPDES permit, number RIR 102150. Said permit was recorded on March 22nd, 2021, in the Hopkinson Land Evidence Records at book 591, pages 469 to 471. Number five, the subject property contains a gross total of 13.23 acres with 2.23 acres categorized as lands unsuitable for development, or LUD. Number six, the proposed plan is a cluster subdivision of four residential lots and one open space lot. The plan proposes one single-family dwelling lot and three duplex lots for a total density of seven lots, including the one required inclusionary dwelling unit. Number seven, all inclusionary dwelling units are subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the Hopkinson Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance as adopted September 20th, 2010, incorporated herein by reference. Number eight, the subject property contains a unique cultural and natural resource known as Witch Rock, which shall be protected by a conveyance to the Hopkinson Land Trust. Conclusions of law, number one, the proposed development is consistent with the comprehensive community plan and/or has satisfactorily addressed the issues where there may be inconsistencies. Number two, the proposed development complies with the Hopkinson Zoning Ordinance, including the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance, which requires one inclusionary residential dwelling unit. Number three, there will be no significant negative environmental impacts from the proposed development as shown on the final plan with all required conditions for approval. Number four, the subdivision as proposed will not result in the creation of individual lots with such physical constraints to development that building on those lots according to pertinent regulations and building standards would be impractical because lands unsuitable for development are excluded from development. Number five, all proposed land development and all subdivision lots shall have adequate and permanent physical access to a public street. Number six, the proposed development provides for safe circulation of pedestrian vehicular traffic, for surface water runoff control, for suitable building sites, and for preservation of natural, historical, and cultural features that contributes to the attractiveness of the community with required conditions of approval. Number seven, the design and location of streets, building lots, utilities, drainage improvements, and other improvements in the proposed development minimizes flooding and soil erosion with required conditions of approval. So the order is, one, the proposed preliminary plan for Fairview Estates is approved, together with the following conditions of approval. A, the requirements set forth in the Rhode Island DEM's insignificant alteration permit, number 21-0015, and RIPDES permit, number RIR 102150, are incorporated by reference herein. B, the ownership notes for parcel five to be deeded to the Hopkinson Land Trust as set forth on page three of the plans dated May 17th, 2021, are incorporated by reference herein. C, the applicant shall grant an easement to the town of Hopkinson over the open space within the development and shall execute and record the document entitled, quote, "Open Space Easement and Maintenance Covenant," end quote, the terms of which are incorporated by reference herein. D, the applicant shall create and record a declaration of homeowners association, or HOA, and shall ensure that it is funded adequately. E, the applicant shall execute the, quote, "Stormwater Facility Maintenance Agreement," end quote, attached here too and made part hereof. F, all rooftops and driveways that drain towards Fairview Avenue shall discharge into onsite drywells. G, areas of the no cut buffer that have been cleared will be allowed to continue to naturally revegetate. H, the town of Hopkinson will not assume any responsibility for the maintenance or performance of the private road or the stormwater management system. I, the HOA shall be obligated to notify the town within 30 days of any change in vendor in the stormwater facility maintenance agreement and provide the town with a copy of the active, active and enforceable agreement. J, the approved landscape plan that shall be that prepared by Muyo Design Group dated April 1st, 2020, any deviation from the approved plan shall require advance approval from the Hopkinson Planning Board. K, the best management practices set forth in the stormwater management plan prepared by American Engineering Inc. and dated May 17th, 2021, shall be followed. L, the deed for each lot shall make specific reference to the required no cut buffer on that lot.
Well done, well crafted, well delivered. I have a motion.
Keith here, second.
I have a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
This is Carolyn. We had discussed this annual inspection report being submitted to the town. Should that be required in this document?
Did that, Al DiOrio, did that revision get embedded into the updated agreement?
That's what I'm looking for.
It was my understanding, I think we were going to insert that into section three of the, of the maintenance agreement.
That was my.
Yes, that's correct. Submit, submit to the town planner's office.
Carolyn, I think it's been covered. Al DiOrio.
Hi. I think it's covered between the owner and the landscape company, but is it covered with the owner and the town?
If you'd like to include that as an additional condition, it certainly doesn't hurt.
I, I think it's consistent with the rest of the language in the, in this motion. So, yeah, I would like that included in here.
So Emily, would you agree to amend your motion and Keith to second an amended motion to accommodate Caroline's request, Carolyn's request?
Sure. This is Emily. I'll amend my motion to include a condition M that an annual inspection report associated with the stormwater facility maintenance agreement is provided to the town planner on a yearly basis.
Very good. Thank you. Keith?
Keith, agree. Yeah, Keith here, I agree to that amendment.
Okay, so we have an amended motion and amended second. Any additional discussion on the motions? Any additional discussion on the motions? Hearing none. All in favor? Deorio, yes.
Lindelö, yes.
Light, yes.
Jamshini, yes.
John Pennypack, yes. Standing, very good. Anyone opposed, or anyone abstaining? Very good. Preliminary plan issued and approved. Very good, thank you all. Next item on the agenda. First item under new business. Final plan. Four lot, seven unit, major land development, Fairview Estates, AP 18, Lot 7K, 66 Fairview Avenue, Shoreline Properties, Inc., applicant. I know the applicant and their representative are present.
Yes, once again, Jeff Cafrey, on behalf of the applicant, Shoreline Properties. In light of the fact that we just received preliminary approval, and I believe all conditions of preliminary approval have been satisfied, I see no reason to do a formal presentation for final, and content to let the board make its decision.
Very good, thank you. Planning Board members?
Mr. Chairman, following up on that, I would also suggest to the board that when you get to making a motion, that you can incorporate by reference the motion that you've previously made for preliminary, and substituting final for preliminary.
Very good, thank you. Planning Board members, any thoughts or comments, questions? Hearing none. Jim, anything on your end?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Jim Lampier, town planner. The applicant submitted two plan sets for final. One was an 11-page construction set, and the other one was a four-page final plan set. The first four pages of both are identical. But I would suggest that all pages of those be combined into one plan set, which would be recorded, and relabeled as final plan set. So I would expect it to be, consist of a total of 12 pages, because the 11-page plan set did not include the landscape plan, whereas the final plan set did. So I would say have all of those pages incorporated into one document, and then I can ask the planning board chairman to come in and sign that recording set, if approved by the board tonight.
Very good, Jim, thank you very much. I concur with Jim's recommendation. I'm at a loss as to why we had two separate documents. Let's get them all into one package, so we're acting on one set of plans. Maggie, anything else on your end?
No.
How's our conservation group?
We're fine on that, Al.
Very good, thank you.
We're good.
It is a final plan presentation. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on this application this evening?
Talia, if you are a member of the public who would like to comment, please press star nine to raise your hand. No one.
No hands. Planning Board, that puts us in a position where I'm prepared to entertain a motion should you be so inclined.
This is Emily. I'll move to approve Shoreline Properties, Inc. application for final plan for a major cluster subdivision located at 66 Fairview Avenue, AP 18, Lot 7K, for a total of four lots with seven residential dwelling units. For my findings of fact and conclusions of law and conditions, I will reference our previous motion for preliminary plan approval by reference, and adopt all the same findings of fact, conclusions of law, conditions of approval.
I have a motion.
Keith here, I'll second that motion.
I have a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor? Deorio, yes.
Lindelö, yes.
Light, yes.
Jamshini, yes.
John Pennypack, yes. Very good, that leaves no one voting no, and no one abstaining. Approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda. Master Plan. Public informational meeting for major land development project, Wood River Health Services Edition, AP 14, Lot 47A, 823 Main Street, Wood River Health Services, Inc., applicant. Is the applicant and/or their representative present this evening?
Yes.
Good evening. Kelly Fercasit for the applicant.
Good evening, Kelly.
How you doing?
Edward Smith for the applicant. I believe we're going to have a few others up here that come. I see them now. The presentation tonight, I believe, is going to be relatively brief, mostly because it's pretty straightforward. We're talking about a building which is nearly 5,000 square feet. It's a two-story building, necessary for administration, patient space, clinical areas, offices, and meeting rooms at the Wood River Health Services up on Main Street. We're also going to redesign the parking, add some parking to accommodate this new building, also pedestrian accessways, make it ADA compliant. There is going to be a new septic system, well, not so much a new septic system, but an additional septic system, which will service the new addition. And the application for that is currently pending before DEM. There are some wetlands in the area, but not anywhere near where the construction is. The buffer zones of that just barely encroach over the boundary, several hundred feet from the proposed construction, so there's no real issue with regard to that. We have David Christie here, who is the project architect, and he can give a brief explanation as to what this is about, the need for it, and also just a quick overview of the building. David, if you're all set?
Yeah, thank you, Kelly. So I believe you guys have the plans before you. You'll see that it's a two-story building that's being proposed with a partial basement. The basement really accommodates mechanical and storage space. And the first floor the first floor of the building accommodates clinical expansion, as well as some common areas for staff, such as conference rooms, break rooms, et cetera. And then the second floor of the addition accommodates administrative offices, as well as a conference and meeting room. From an exterior design perspective, we thought to come up with an exterior design that was fitting with the existing building, as well as the rural character of the site. And you'll see that kind of at opposite corners of the building, there are two elements formed by a gable roof that kind of maintains a building height that's less than a 40-foot zoning height limit. So we meet the zoning height limits. The footprint is all kind of outside of the setback requirements. And then the materials consist of horizontal siding, as well as some vertical, kind of board and back-end type siding, that's similar in character to the existing materials on the adjacent building. And Mike Wilkinson from Wood Engineering will be able to go over some of the site requirements in a little bit more depth.
Yes, hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Mike Wilkinson from Wood Engineering, and I can speak a little bit more to the existing and proposed site conditions. And so the site address is 823 Main Street, AP 14, Lot 47A. It's a 39.9-acre parcel, but the work area is about 40,000 square feet, and located in the southwest portion of the lot. There's about 1,000 feet of frontage on Main Street, which is also Rhode Island Route 3. The site is zoned residential special, and it abuts, the area of development abuts the residential special and commercial special zoning districts to the west, and the manufacturing district across the street. Under existing conditions, there's three interconnected buildings constructed in 1980 with approximately 17,600 square feet. There's 81 parking spaces, five of which are ADA. Current access is from a two-way access from Main Street. This access drive is also a right-of-way access easement for shared access from Main Street to Lot 47A, B and C, B and C located to the north. The setbacks, the front yard setback is about 96.5 feet. Under existing conditions, side setback is 75 feet, and the rear yard setback is 148 feet. The current facility is serviced by an OWTS septic system that was constructed in about 1982, and is located, upgrading into the northwest of the existing building. Water service to the site is from an onsite drilled well, which is located within the northern parking area. Stormwater, under existing conditions, flows south and southeast to a swale that abuts and is parallel to Main Street, and which flows southwest. Then wetlands on the property were flagged by NRS. They're a well-respected firm in Rhode Island, and they found that wetlands were over 50 feet away from the existing access drive to the east. Under proposed development, we're proposing a approximately 10,518 gross square foot two-story addition with a partial basement. A portion of the southern existing building section is to be demolished. That accounts for about 1,700 square feet. So the net total building area is about 26,400 square feet. And as far as parking requirements, we're required to have one space per 250 square feet of floor area, which equates to 106 spaces, and we are proposing 117 between the existing spaces and the additional proposed spaces. For the ADA requirements, for facilities with 101 to 150 spaces, five ADA spaces are required, one of which is to be a van space. We have seven spaces provided with two van spaces. Proposed setbacks are the same for the side and rear yards. The front yard setback is 85.1 feet. For vehicular access, there is no change to the existing access drive, which serves parcels 47A, B, and C. We are including a emergency vehicle turnaround at the lower left or southwest portion of the site to accommodate a fire truck up to 40 feet in length, and this was okayed by the Hopkinton Fire Marshal. We're widening the access near the northwest corner of the existing building to allow a safe passage of two-way traffic, and including a dumpster area and four additional parking spaces. The main entrance to the building addition is on the western face, which has walkways connected to the extended parking area, all of which are ADA compliant. For utilities, we have a proposed OWTS system to serve the addition only, separate from the existing system serving the existing building. It will be located east of the building addition, and will conform to all the applicable setbacks and design parameters outlined in the DEM OWTS regulations. Our stormwater system also conforms to DEM stormwater management standards. Although a DEM permit is not required for this project because our development area is less than an acre, and natural flow of stormwater does not go to the eastern wetlands. As previously mentioned, it flows south to the swale along Route 3. And also, we are not impacting the wetlands to the east of the site. The stormwater system consists of a StormTech subsurface infiltration chamber system, which captures and treats runoff from the new impervious areas. The overflow from the system, again, flows towards Route 3, and peak rates and volumes for runoff are met for all storms up to and including the 100-year event. Our stormwater calculations were reviewed by the DOT, who has determined that a physical alteration permit is not required for our project. Water service will be served via the existing well on site with supplemented with storage tanks that are located inside of the building addition. For electric, there will be a new utility pole and transformer to support the addition. There will be pad-mounted propane storage tanks in the exterior of the addition. And for site lighting, we have site lighting fixtures located within the existing parking area to the north and west, as well as the expanded parking area to the south of the building addition. And our lighting fixtures will conform with the dark sky lighting ordinance within the subdivision regulations. And just to summarize, the state permits that could be applicable, but some aren't, is the, we don't have a DOT permit required based on their analysis, and we don't require a DEM preliminary determination application based on our site size and no impact to wetlands. So our own state permit is our OWTS permit. And with that, I will pass it off to the landscape architect for the project, John Luca, to talk about the landscape design for the project.
Hi, my name is John Luca. I'm with Traverse Landscape Architects. So on the project, most of the landscape is around the addition and parking lot. To the south, there's buffer planting, where there will be some tree removal for the parking lot. And then around the main entrance of the addition, there'll be some new plantings for aesthetics. And then on the east side, where there's currently outdoor patio space, the landscape will be slightly enhanced in that area as well. The landscape design also keeps in mind a lot of the existing vegetation, which we'll be keeping as much as we can with that focus.
Hey, thank you. Kelly, anything else?
Yeah, just one thing I forgot to mention in the beginning. This is a pre-existing non-conforming use, because the property exists in a residential special zone. And in order to add on to this non-conforming use, we also have to go to the zoning board to get a special use permit. By then, we'll have our outs approval from DEM, and I don't think there's any doubt we'll be able to satisfy the special use permit standards. As to the sixth standard, which we need to satisfy, under, I think it's 452360, I don't think that there's any problems with any of these. This is a pre-existing non-conforming use. It's been there for over 20 years, provides a vital service to the community. As far as no significance negative, no significant negative environmental impacts, I don't think it's going to have any impacts whatsoever, as Mike explained. As far as adequate and permanent physical access to a public street, we've already got... we've already got one. The proposed development provides safe circulation for pedestrians and vehicles. That's been satisfied. It's more than sufficient parking. And its placement on the site is certainly adequate for the building and pretty much serves the building. As far as controlling surface runoff, flooding, soil erosion, things of that matter, I think Mike's presentation and certainly the submissions, which he provided to the board demonstrate that that's not going to be a problem. So I think we ticked off all of the standards that we have to. We request the board to approve the master plan and also to submit a positive recommendation to the zoning board for approval of the forthcoming special use.
Very good, thank you. So we'll start with planning board members. Let's hear your thoughts or comments. Perhaps there are none.
No, Keith, I'm good with everything. Please.
Okay, then, Al DiOrio, I only have one comment for you. In your package, you've submitted a copy of a preliminary survey dated 3/17/21. As you proceed into your next phase of review, I'm going to ask that you include an updated survey sheet signed by the surveyor and include it as part of your plan set as required by the Board of Registration.
Will do.
Yes, Deb?
Yes, my question is regarding the capacity of the well. I know you're putting in a separate septic to the new addition, which is a very good idea, but do you know if that well can handle the additional staff needs in the health center? Or will you need a second well?
There was a, some plumbing calculations done. I don't have them in front of me, but the well is going to be supplemented with water storage tanks that are to be located within the building addition. And that will satisfy the water needs for the addition.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Deb.
You're welcome.
So we'll go around. Jim, anything from your end?
Nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you. Maggie, anything from you?
No, nothing from me, other than the proposed motion.
Very good. Time to go to the audience. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on this application this evening, this would be your opportunity.
Mr. Collier, if there are any members of the public who'd like to comment, please press star nine. No hands.
No hands in the audience?
No hands, but there is a dog.
No hands in the audience. Planning board members, this puts us in a position where I'm prepared to entertain a motion should we be so inclined.
Keith here, I move to grant conditional approval for the proposed building addition to the Wood River Health Services and to issue a favorable advisory opinion to the zoning board of review for the issuance of a special use permit to expand the non-conforming use. Findings of fact, one, Wood River Health Services, here and after WRHS, owns and occupies a building constructed in 1980, located at 823 Main Street, Hopkinton, also known as Assessor's Platte, 14 Lot 47A. The 39.9 acre site is located within the RS Residential Special District and has 1,028 feet of frontage on Main Street. WRHS proposes to construct a 5,008 square foot first-floor addition to provide a conference room, break room, clinical spaces, a pharmacy and storage. A second story of 4,388 square feet is proposed for offices and conference spaces. A new basement is proposed at 1,122 square feet. WRHS also proposes to expand parking, air landscaping and stormwater management. Number four, the proposed building addition will not be connected to the existing OWTS and will be serviced by a new OWTS. Number five, a partial boundary and topographic survey dated March 17, 2021, was repaired by Bradford J. Travers, PLS Waterman Engineering. Number six, wetland flagging was done by Natural Resources Services, Inc. and a report was issued on January 21, 2021. There'll be no impact to wetlands. Number seven, Wood Environmental and Infrastructure Solutions, Inc. prepared and submitted a comprehensive report dated May 14, 2021, which addressed existing site conditions and zoning analysis, proposed site improvements and stormwater management. The report's findings concerning stormwater management, traffic, archaeological and historic areas, wetlands and traffic are incorporated herein. Number eight, CM Folioche, Registered Professional Civil Engineer, prepared the site plan dated May 14, 2021. Number nine, architectural renderings and floor plans dated April 16, 2021, were prepared by Vision III Architects. Conclusions of law, number one, the proposed development is consistent with the comprehensive community plan and/or has satisfactorily addressed the issues where there may be inconsistencies. Number two, the proposed development complies with the Hopkinton zoning ordinance. Number three, there will be no significant negative environmental impacts when the proposed development is shown on the plan with all required conditions for approval. Number four, the proposed additions will have adequate and permanent physical access to a public street. Number five, the proposed development provides for safe circulation of pedestrian and vehicular traffic for surface water runoff control, for suitable building sites and for preservation of natural, historical and cultural features that contributes to the attractiveness of the community with required conditions of approval. Number six, the design and location of streets, building lots, utilities, drainage improvements and other improvements in the proposed development minimizes flooding and soil erosion with the required conditions of approval. Order, the proposed plan is conditionally approved and hereby referred to the zoning board with a positive recommendation for the issuance of a special permit to expand a non-conforming use.
Very good. Once again, well crafted, well delivered. I have a motion.
This is Emily, I'll second.
I have a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor? DiOrio, yes?
Lindley, yes?
Light, yes?
Shumshini, yes?
John Pennypacker, yes?
Very good, thank you. Approved.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda, under new business. A pre-application, five lot, minor cluster subdivision, Fairview Residential Cluster, AP 28, lots 113 and 113B, 0 and 46 Fairview Avenue, Brushnet Cove Investments LLC and S&amp;L Family Properties LLC applicants. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Indeed.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name for the record.
Hello, David Johnston, attorney for the applicants.
And Mr. Sardelli is also here.
Yes, Jamie Sardelli, Sardelli Survey.
Please proceed.
Good evening. Thank you, members of the board. So we're requesting a residential cluster subdivision under Section 9.2 of the subdivision land, excuse me, land development regulations. I believe this property borders the property that was just heard on the first hearing this morning by way of reference, although not 100% properties, that would, sure, but I believe it was a shoreline properties, property. This particular parcel, two parcels, excuse me, contain 494,469 square feet of land. They are single-family residents at 46 Fairview Ave., as well as a substandard lot of record, which contains the vast majority of the acreage at 9.75 acres. That is lot, plot 28, Lot 113, 0 Fairview Avenue. That lot is substandard in that it has only about 32 feet of existing frontage. We're proposing to combine these two parcels for the cluster subdivision. The density calculation of the combined total area yields 5.41 units. That's the total square footage minus the LUD divided by 80,000 per Section 9.2. So this pre-application hearing, a few points I'd like to discuss and bring to the board's attention and get feedback and some direction from the board. So I'll just hit a couple of points that I find relevant and then Mr. Sardelli can kind of fill in with any technical information and we can take it from there. Wetlands were flagged and they exist in the northeast corner of the property. We will be outside of the perimeter wetland, as well as the 100-foot riverbank wetland with all construction. There is a small encroachment onto Lot 114. Their garage encroaches 36 square feet. That was included in the land unsuitable for development calculation. We did grant an easement to Mr. Pelletier as the current owner. He only just recently purchased Lot 114. He granted an easement over that small encroachment. The proposal, and we've discussed this quite a bit with Mr. Pelletier, the owner of Lot 114, is to move the driveway roughly, the driveway right-of-way area roughly 40 feet off of his property line and roughly 60 feet to the actual drive, the physical drive. So we have the right-of-way, then at 50 feet and then a narrow 20-foot driveway. So it'll be roughly 60 feet from him. So that's going to solve for that encroachment, give him more space. And he has reviewed these plans and we've discussed them at length a number of times. He's also asked that we grant an easement for him to be able to get a vehicle to the back of his property. So it would be in behind his garage, along that existing gravel driveway, which we're happy to do. And on preliminaries, on preliminary application, we would include that into our LUD area, as well as show proposed easement area. So that's the Lot 114 issue. Additionally, concerning Lot 114 and then further south, 113A, we'd like to grant permanent easements to the owners of those land, of those parcels, largely because for many years now, they've accessed trails that exist on the DOT land, the state land in the rear of this parcel. So our proposal is to grant pedestrian easement the right-of-way so they can access those trails, continue to access those trails in the rear of the area. There's a pond, I forget the name of the pond, I apologize, in the back that they use, that also walk their dogs back there. So that would be part of, part of our application as well. Lastly, the buffer, there is a 100-foot buffer in Section 9.2. We have the 100-foot property line buffer added, overlaid onto this map, excuse me, sheet two on the proposed conditions. So you can see where that lays relative to where our proposals are. The vast majority of the site, we're able to maintain that 100-foot property line buffer. There are certain areas that we're going to need to reduce that 100-foot buffer, but we believe it is consistent with the requirements of the subdivision. And those would be along the driveway, as well as the existing dwelling at 46 Fairview Avenue. We'd also certainly be open to no-cut buffers at 46 Fairview Avenue, as well as other relevant portions of this site, you know, as deemed appropriate by the board. I believe that's all I have for initial comments and things that I wanted to discuss and point out to the board. So at this point, if there's any feedback from the board or any thoughts, I'd be happy to discuss.
Yep, thank you for that. Al DiOrio, so listen, let me just jump right into the, what I see as a critical element of your design, the 100-foot buffer. My understanding, and I'll certainly defer to Mr. Lampier, my understanding is that the buffer does not include lots. So there's a buffer and the lots reside outside of the buffer. Now, the board has some latitude with regards to how they want to enforce that buffer. But my concern here is, well, I have to be candid. This doesn't adhere to the spirit of the cluster ordinance. And while I'm sure something can be worked out, should my colleagues on the board concur, what I don't want to do is set up a set of circumstances where this becomes the new interpretation of our cluster ordinance. And so I'm going to ask Maggie to weigh in on this concern of mine. You know, we have a set of regulations. This is, if you want to play by the cluster rules, this is what you have to do. Essentially, it focuses on the precedent issue. I do not want to set up a set of circumstances here where the next person, next applicant comes in and does exactly the same thing, because that is not what we intended when we put together the cluster ordinance. I was around when that happened, so I kind of have some insight as to the origin of the ordinance. So that is my primary concern. I'll leave it to my other planning board members and Maggie to comment on my perspective.
Mr. Chairman, I absolutely understand your comments. And I would say that when an applicant is unable to meet the requirements of the ordinance, it's their obligation to request a waiver and follow the requirements and meet the burden of proof set forth in the subdivision regulations for a waiver. I'm not sure whether that's been requested yet. I haven't seen anything in the paperwork about that. So that would be my only comment at the present time.
Maggie, thank you. I certainly appreciate that the waiver would be appropriate. I think counsel has suggested that somehow this application is completely in conformance with the buffer requirements. So again, there might be a misunderstanding here and it could be on my side of the argument. But if you'd like to request a waiver going forward, I gotta believe the planning board members would be inclined to consider it, but you know, there will be stipulations that go along with that waiver. And let's just return to the previous application where in fact, the 100-foot buffer could not be maintained, but there were generous offerings by that applicant with regards to vegetation, no cut buffer zones, to get us back to the intention of the ordinance. So.
May I just ask a point of clarification? Because I think I, two things. One, I didn't intend to incline that we were, or imply that we were in full conformance. I do realize that we need a reduction in that buffer. I guess two points of clarification. I just, I'm reading in 9.2, I didn't interpret, I guess, that the lot lines themselves need to be within that 100-foot buffer. So that 100-foot buffer then would be the entirety of the open space, entirely open space?
Subject to Jim's confirming that my perspective is correct.
Yes, Jim Lampier, Tom Planner. The buffer is intended to be 100 feet from the outer perimeter of the subject parcel. And the development, the development is supposed to be outside of that block.
Okay, so when we designed this, I don't think we, I looked at the definition of buffer, which would be open space, no cut space. I didn't realize that the, and I thought we would satisfy, there's certain areas, take Lot E as a good example, where the 100-foot buffer cuts into where we have proposed Lot E. My intention was to resolve that with a, a, a. My intention was to resolve that with a no cut buffer. To the to a reasonable degree. Obviously, we may, we may have to. Reduce the buffer somewhat there, but to add a no cut buffer, but I didn't realize the one hundred foot buffer. And I think we can achieve this and looking at this plan, I think it's achievable. It's gonna have to be reworked. As far as engineering, but I didn't realize that the the one hundred foot buffer could no area in that one hundred foot buffer. Could count towards the forty thousand minimum lot size in a residential cluster. That wasn't. That wasn't my understanding of the regulations as I read through them, but I think that's. I think that sounds like that was the spirit of or the intent of the. Ordinance according to what I'm hearing now. Does that sound? Correct?
Yeah, Jim Lampier, Tom Planner. The the purpose of a hundred foot perimeter buffer. Is to mitigate the impact of the subdivision on neighboring property owners. To get to give them a measure of distance from the next house. So it's basically for the benefit of a budding properties.
Can I? Sorry. Okay, I just also like to point out that we. So in that the areas that we are kind of asking for a little relief here. You know, we are moving the existing right of way over on to the west. To try to minimize the impact on. Lot one fourteen. It is within the hundred foot buffer area. I'm not sure if you're including right of ways in that as well. The lot this was to keep some level of geometry here. If we need to put some no cut vegetation buffer zones in the back of the property that we had no intentions of, I don't believe. Clearing these areas anyways. So if we need to give some sort of a, you know, no cut zone in that area in the back of say lot B. Not an issue. The area along in the proposed fifty foot right of way as you move back into the property towards the cul-de-sac, that area is already. An existing field. So it's already cleared. The lots are kind of trying to maintain and hold some area into that wood line. Beyond that. Which is all outside of that hundred foot except for where Mrs. Johnson saying up in lot E. Again, we'll try to minimize that with some sort of vegetated buffer. You know, we'll try to access somewhere we're not creating more clearing. But I really do feel like we were trying to represent the cluster, you know, subdivision here. With respects to, you know, open space, you know, where for more than fifty percent open space here, we're really trying to keep these houses in. You know, in a way that. I feel it minimizes the impact on the landscape itself.
Okay, thank you for that, Al DiOrio. So listen, I. No cup buffers. Speaking for myself. I'd be prepared to look at that. If you've exhausted all your other avenues. I don't believe you've done that on lot B. And let's, let's face it, you and I are both very clear on this. You're gonna put a no cut buffer on the plan. No one's gonna read it. This property is going to be conveyed to the subsequent owner. They're gonna go in and they're gonna put.
They're gonna do what they want.
Forty three thousand square feet of lawn in. So that does not make me feel warm and fuzzy.
If I could just in other jurisdictions and certainly with D E M on on limits of disturbance on D E M. We've many times installed permanent, permanent bounds, which are typically pokes with. A marking on them, a tag on them. D E M has a very specific tag that they limited disturbance.
Yes, Al DiOrio, looking, I'm very familiar, I'm very familiar with this process. And when we talk about, let's draw two, two analogies here, lot E. I hear what you're saying and personally. I I would be prepared to accept your. Alternative. However, lot B. Come on, a third of that lot is within the one hundred foot buffer zone. I don't care what kind of posts you put up. From a practical perspective, that is not gonna work. So all I'm suggesting is this is a pre application meeting. It is my obligation as a planning board member to tell you what I think. You're you're hearing it.
Fair enough. So I mean, I think based on on that comment, and I apologize if I'm jumping stepping over any other board members. I know folks want to speak. When I'm here, the geometry of these lots have to change and and I think that's largely my fault from a misreading or misunderstanding of the ordinance. I was unaware that those lot lines were not allowed to encroach into that into that buffer area. So that changes, I think, how we approach. The the layout itself. But I think in looking at this, and I hope in looking at this, that we can still. Achieve with minimal reductions in that one hundred foot buffer. A substantially similar plan to what's here. Just one point of clarity, a waiver is a waiver. I read section seven that the. As the waiver, would it be required to reduce that one hundred foot buffer, but a formal waiver request? Would be required for any reduction in that one hundred foot buffer. I just want clarity there. So for my application.
Jim Lampier, Tom Planner. I I would now, I know, I know our solicitor is new to our regulations and maybe she hasn't read all of them, but the way we've interpreted this. In the past, and if you read that paragraph, I think Mr. Johnston is correct. That even though a one hundred foot buffer is required. If you read the entirety of that paragraph, you'll see that the board has the flexibility to on the fly adjust it. Without without the submission of a formal waiver. And and again, just think of what a formal waiver would do. Is that gonna kick this up to a major subdivision now? So. I I would say that, I mean, the way the board has. Has done this in the past and other subdivisions, many other subdivisions is that. They use their best judgment and they made made accommodations and adjustments to the open space buffer.
So I hope that answers your question as to the waiver. I think the answer is no.
And I can follow up prior to, but that sounds, yeah, that sounds. Like my my interpretation of it, but we can follow up and I can follow up with the solicitor as well. Prior to the formal application. It sounds like we may be here for one more pre application. To to rework these geom this geometry a bit. Prior to coming in for for preliminary. If that's obviously, if that's okay with the board. But I'd certainly like to hear any other comments that are feedback.
Yep, very good. Thank you. Planning board members, other thoughts and comments?
This is Emily. I'll I'll jump in. I had similar thoughts about the hundred foot buffer. I think. I appreciate where this plan is coming from and the intent to incorporate the open space and the intent to, you know, include no cut buffers and things like that and create a geometry that. Takes advantage of those things. I think it you're right. It simply could be coming before us with a different preliminary plan. You know, start with outlining what those hundred foot buffers are and just realign the geometry of the lots to fit within that. I mean, the. The road, the proposed road and everything is within that one hundred foot buffer as well. Whether or not you need to, you know, actually request a waiver to alter the one hundred foot buffer, I think we would want to see. Good documentation justification for why the buffer can't be attained in certain places. And an explanation of, you know, potential alternatives that you explored and exhausted. Before coming to the conclusion that you couldn't meet a one hundred foot buffer in a particular location. The other thing I just wanted to highlight was in the. Orient myself to the directionality of the plan here. It looks like in the eastern part of the parcel. Where there's a wetland area and the plan denotes the fifty foot perimeter and the one hundred foot riverbank. Boundary. It would really be my preference to, you know, exclude that one hundred foot riverbank. Boundary from any particular parcel. Kind of to the same. The same intent that that Al was just talking about with, you know, cutting within a proposed open space area. You know, our town has adopted a wild and scenic rivers stewardship plan that seeks to minimize impact, further impact within a hundred feet of. Any of the rivers in our watersheds. And so leaving it up to a homeowner to not disturb that area, I think, might. Not be a thing that the board wants to really rely on and. We look to you folks to sort of preclude that as an option. And exclude that one hundred foot river riverbank wetland area from any buildable area.
Thank you, Emily. That's a great suggestion. Any other planning board members? Okay, hearing none. How about our conservation group?
Sorry, no, I was thinking the same thing that Emily just commented on, so I'll leave it at that.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jim, anything else from your end?
Yes, Jim Lampier, Tom Planner. I'd like to take another read of the state law that was just passed that. That prohibits towns from including the wetland buffer in the minimum lot size. And see if that make sure that that applies to clusters.
Sorry, Jim, I broke up. What was the last sentence there?
I know, I know the state within the last couple of years made a modification in the. Requirements for density to to achieve density. And it says that wetland buffers. Would not be included in arriving at density and also they wouldn't be in. You cannot exclude them from the they may be included in the minimum lot size. That's ultimately. Decided upon. So I just want to take another read of that just to make a hundred percent sure. But we went through that with the Fairview subdivision. I went back and forth with Mr. Freeman on that one. And so. We just want to make sure that we can exclude exclude the buffer from the lot. For example, even in this town here, you can have wetlands as part of a lot.
Sure.
So why not a buffer? I mean, that's even less than the wetland. So and again, with with the with the changes made to state law, I don't know that we can actually do that. So I'd like to take another look at that.
Understood. I would just, I guess I would just draw the distinction between. A mandate. And Emily's request for an applicant to consider a perspective. I think she.
Voluntarily.
I think she's done the latter.
Oh, okay, fine. Applicant can voluntarily submit to anything that the board wants, but. I know the last application we had discussion about it, so it's not, I thought it was amenable, but. While I have the floor, I'd just like to, you know, hop on this perimeter buffer thing again. And like Emily said. The cul-de-sac is basically touching the property line of one thirteen A. Very, very little room to navigate around that. And also the hundred foot buffer impinges upon lot B in two locations, not just next to one thirteen C, but also. Also the road and and whatnot. And also, as mentioned, lot E, same thing. And I agree with the chairman is that in in practice. Things like this would never be enforced and it's impractical. I don't know why you'd want to create a lot B. Where you would tell the property owner that basically, you know, you can't clear it and have your kids go out and play ball. You gotta, you gotta admit that these these are cluster lots to begin with. They're not, they're not eighty thousand square foot lots to begin with. They're small lots, clusters. So to even further restrict the usage of that is is, you know. In my mind, foolhardy. You also have a drainage basin that's located in the. In the open space and not that it can't be done. But if you read the subdivision regulations, it says that at the preliminary plan submission. A detailed use, land use for the open space shall be submitted. So. I heard Mr. Johnston say that he feels as though another pre application meeting is needed. I think I think we've gotten the message from the board tonight that the board is very, very concerned. About the open space buffer and they want the applicant to do everything possible to maximize that buffer. So given the fact that. Tonight's pre application meeting, there was no notice requirement as the risk of preliminary. I would say that my suggestion would be or thought is. Take what you've learned tonight from the planning board. Go right to preliminary and address these things where the neighbors will be notified. There'll be a, you know, public comment period on this. And then let's hear what the neighbors have to say because that's gonna play way heavily on what the planning board thinks. And so at at the preliminary stage, you might come in with a preliminary plan. But there's nothing saying that that can't be amended to the next meeting. So I don't know how much time we want to waste on free apps. Before we really get to preliminary because we can change it there as well. So. Those are my thoughts.
Good thinking, Al DiOrio. Hey, so listen, just one other thought. Jim put his finger on it and I was remiss in not exploring it. The idea of the right of way at the cul-de-sac. And its proximity to what I'm going to call the southeastern boundary line. I can't tell from the mapping that I'm looking at. I've got a reduced copy in front of me. It doesn't appear that the right of way actually touches that boundary. Of course, we would not want that to happen. Right? Because that opens up Pandora's box in the future of the abutting property owner. Having access to a right of way that we did not intend to be traveled. So if in your future iterations, you could pull that right of way. Away from that boundary a suitable amount. So there's. Absolutely no mistaking that it does not touch the boundary. That would be appreciated.
Can I just one point of clarity, Mr. Trentholm, Kevin Trentholm, who owns the that subtly partial parcel lot one thirteen A. We did discuss quite a bit. He. Likes the idea of being able to access. I agree, it probably should not touch that boundary. But I just want to be clear that we are at least. Going to be granting one fourteen and one thirteen A pedestrian easements. Through that through that right of way so that they can continue to use the land, the open space land.
Yeah, Al DiOrio, pedestrian access does not concern me. I applaud your efforts to keep people walking out there. But you bring that cul-de-sac to the boundary line and it opens up a whole different. Perspective that I'm not, I don't think you want to go there.
Sure. Yeah, no, understood. I just wanted to be clear when I when I discussed that easement, it was is for pedestrian access, not for. Vehicular access, not for future development potentials, things of that nature.
Yep, very good. Thank you.
James Sardelli here, Sardelli Service. So that is a few feet off of the boundary line as is. And I believe our intention going forward is to move it further away and potentially shift it down a little bit to reduce our. Our drainage burden. So it is going to be coming further away from that property line. It's not, there's no intent to touch it at all.
Very good, Al DiOrio. Thanks. Those are all good, good objectives. Okay, so let's see, where do we leave off? Jim ended ended last. Maggie, anything from your end?
No, you guys have done a great job of covering the issues.
I'm sorry. John, yes.
Hi, this is John. Yeah, I, after hearing Jim talk a bit and I was reminded of his comment in the memo. I am interested in sort of what those plans are for the open space beyond being, you know, a. A place for the the two neighbors to walk. You know, also noting that this was this is adjacent or real close to the the property we heard earlier this evening. So if in the future iteration, a better sense of what that open space will be and what it will mean. I would appreciate that information.
Very good, John. Thank you, Al DiOrio. I'm pretty sure that at the preliminary submission, Jim elaborated a little bit to me. There has to be a fairly comprehensive. Open space management. Address of same kind of document. So.
Yes, Jim Lampier, Tom Planner. I'd like to direct the applicant's attention to page one fourteen at the bottom of our sub regs. And that specifically talks about that. It says at the time of preliminary review by the planning board. A more detailed open space use plan shall be submitted for review and approval. Which may be combined with any required grading plans, landscaping plans. Soil erosion plans or drainage plans required for preliminary approval. The planning board shall require final construction plans to show proposed open space uses and alterations required as a condition of final approval. I'd also like to mention too that when you come back to preliminary. It looks like there's some engineering work that needs to be done here with drainage and whatnot. And so. it looks like there's some engineering work that needs to be done here with drainage and whatnot. And so I think all of those issues should be brought forth at that time.
If, two, two points, Jim, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up, just on the right book and page. Regarding, regarding the open space, so the open space plan we, we intend on gauging, and we've discussed it with Hallie Beckman, a landscape architect, regarding the open space plan as far as what, what the ground cover is, what it makes up, as well as getting a more detailed location of the existing walking trails that, that dock through that property. So that, that will be included. And on your second point, Jim, regarding the engineering, at the preliminary plan, and I apologize to this difference sometimes for jurisdiction, are, are we required to have the full engineering created as far as proposed drainage? Engineering specs for ISDS approved at DEM, et cetera? Or is that something we do once we have? I'd be, I'd be hesitant to, to go through the full, full engineering schematics. I mean, it's quite a bit of work. It's a lot of test holes. It's a lot of data to be crunched by the experts. I don't want to put test holes in places and then come back. And they're all in the wrong places because things are, things are being moved. That's, so that's a concern. I just want at preliminary, would it be appropriate to have, you know, the proposed, and we do have some test, test holes done on site, but certainly not enough to design to DEM standards. The drainage basin, as well as the four septic systems that need to be installed. So I just want to be clear, if that's what we need for preliminary versus more or less the same plan with different geometry.
Yes, Jim Lafferty, Tom Planner. This is a minor subdivision as proposed. And the preliminary checklist for a minor subdivision requires either approved septic designs for all lots or subdivision suitability. So I would, I would suggest that maybe subdivision suitability might be more appropriate for you. But what I was referring to as well, and not just septic systems, with the drainage detention pond that you have in the open space, which is close to Mr. Trentholm's property. I haven't seen any engineering work yet. So how can you size a detention pond? Do, I think we want that detention pond to function properly. I don't think we want stormwater runoff going on Mr. Trentholm's property. I think we might have another discussion if we, if that occurred. So again, you're an attorney. Jamie Sardelli is a land surveyor. I think we need engineering input here, especially when you have a road being constructed, albeit it's not a town road, it's still a road that, we just went through a private road with a, with a major subdivision. So I would, I would say there's engineering issues here that need to be scoped out. And now again, I hear what you're saying as well, is that the geometry of these lots could change. The length of the road is going to change possibly, you said. You know, I would say engineer these things at the worst case possible solution. If you're going to shorten them up or lessen things, then, then the ponds can be smaller, but and, and we can't really anticipate at this point how the planning board might want to change this, this plan. So I would say proceed with caution, but, but, but give us the material that we require with, with our checklist. Pretty tough to approve a plan without any engineering work done here.
Understood. Al Diorio, Jim, thank you. That's, that's right on point. So listen, I fully appreciate that, you know, your engineering work and your additional work has to be done for the preliminary submission. But come on, we're, we're going to put a road in. The, if the road might be a little bit longer, it might be a little bit shorter. But the engineering work to size that basin, it's going to have to be done. You can do it now, or you can do it later. So my suggestion would be, do it now. If there have to be some minor changes because the road gets a little bit narrower, a little bit longer, a little bit shorter, these are minor revisions to your substantial calculations. And with regards to subdivision suitability, that is your only option. You can't really come back with individual permits here. You're not, you're not on a town road. So subdivision suitability, it is.
I can just add one thing, Mr. Johnston. I didn't want to discourage you from coming back with another pre-app. If you think that's to your advantage, fine. I was, you know, I, I know we have a lot of applications and we don't have a lot of space on agendas these days, so I was trying to minimize that for you if I could. But if you think another pre-app is, is worth your effort, then that, I'm fine with that. But if that helps things.
Understood. No, I appreciate it. I, I just was trying to get clarity as far as the, the reason we went with pre-application was really for this, because I wanted to know what the board, you know, I, obviously, I, I read it a bit differently than, than I should have. So, which is why I thought pre-application may be appropriate again to come back and just, just determine. But based on what I'm hearing, I think I have a pretty good understanding of, of what's required to make this work. So I don't have any, I don't have any, certainly any objections to the, the preliminary engineering. I just, you know, again, my only concern is if we go and, and start working on, on test holes that, that ultimately are, are moved based on, on feedback from the board, it, it just gets to be a long and, and expensive proposition to do the same engineering over and over again. So that's all I'm trying to avoid, right? I certainly think, I mean, the retention basin is going to go roughly where it is, you know, plus minus a few feet here and there as we can, as we can move these lots around. But I think Jamie and I and the engineers can, can get that figured out based on this feedback reasonably easily. So I don't, certainly don't have any objection there. If there's any major concerns that come up, I think during our reworking of these plans, perhaps in a pre-application, a second pre-application, I could write, I may request. But from what I'm hearing here, I, I think, you know, I think I can certainly conform to, to what you're requesting. And, and I certainly appreciate going straight to preliminary and, and handling it there. And as well as, you know, getting this into the, the public hearing realm of things and getting the process rolling formally.
Yeah, just, just one additional thought, if I may, Al Diorio. So I, I appreciate that this is a decision that you might want to give some, some thought to and reconsider. But an idea. If you decide that a pre-application, a second pre-application is in your best interest, a thought would be, do your notice. Now, I know you don't have to do a notice for pre-application. But Jim has already alerted you to the fact that the input of the abutting property owners is likely to weigh heavily on any subsequent planning board activity. So do the notice and let's get their input. It's not, it's not required, but it, there's nothing, I don't think there's anything preventing you from doing it. Just a thought.
Yeah, thank you. That's a good, that's a good idea.
Mrs. Emily, kind of related thought on that. We mentioned it a couple of times. We heard an application for the neighboring property earlier today. They have also in their plan, a significant portion designated as open space, and I believe it was conveyed to the land trust. I would be shocked if you, this applicant didn't hear from the land trust about the use of the open space for this parcel, because it likely would be contiguous. And so just throwing that out there. Maybe there's someone from the land trust that's waiting to talk, actually, in public comment. And then the other thing that occurred to me is that I believe next month, we'll be hearing an application for a development to the northeast of this parcel, also abutting this parcel, the Skunk Hill Solar Project. So I would, you know, I think it's not the applicant's burden by any means to consider those things, but I just want to raise it for fellow board members, like, we have the opportunity to think about this in a zoomed out view a little bit. And, you know, obviously, we can't bring other applications considerations into this application, but this is a little like mini planning exercise, maybe of thinking about, you know, what's going on in an area.
If I may briefly, I don't believe, I believe there's a two or three parcels, or there's a subdivision with an open space that separates us from that Skunk Hill. I did see, I did, just on the GIS maps, I've seen that. I'm not sure they, but they may. But I believe there's an open space. I, I, I can't think of the name of the subdivision that has the open space that backs up, which I believe is what abuts, what would be the easterly boundary with, with DOT. And then as far as the land trust is concerned, if there is someone waiting, I'll, I'll wait for them. But pub, contact information there would be good, because that would be a good discussion to have prior to our, our next submission. Certainly be happy to speak with them as far as what they're doing with the abutting parcels and what they want to do.
Great.
Good. Thank you.
I have a comment.
Sure.
I don't want the applicant to think that this project isn't going to be reviewed by the planning board and, and developed based on anything other than its own merit. I mean, there are projects going on, on the perimeter of this. But asking for consideration about, you know, on your, you, asking you for consideration of the other development, it, it's a request. But the planning board is going to make its decision based on this project's merit. And I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Yep, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, so listen, if there's nothing else from the planning board and the planner, and let's see if there's anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on this application this evening. It is a pre-application. There is no decision that's going to be issued by the planning board. But if you're out there and you have some comments, this would be your opportunity.
Mrs. Polly, if there are any members of the public who'd like to comment, please press R9. No hands.
No hands. Okay, very good. So once again, it is a pre-application. There's no decision forthcoming from the planning board. I guess my only question in closing to the applicant is, did you get what you came for?
I guess so. We'll, we'll get back to the drawing board. But no, I very much appreciate your time this evening. This was very informative. And I think we'll bring something that looks similar, but also substantially, substantially different. So thank you for the clarity. Thank you for the feedback. I appreciate everything. And I will, I'll reach out to the Hopkins Land Trust. I'll get on Google on that tomorrow and reach out to them and we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the solicitor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have submitted to a, a very brief solicitor's report, and it's really just updates of things. There's, there's no land use 101 this evening. Sightwalks. So after the last board meeting where we painstakingly scheduled and gathered our calendars, upon further review, I had determined that our proposal, that we had designed for the sightwalks was not going to work after all, because we could not have simultaneous streaming video or audio. And so we would be violating open meetings laws. So we went back to the drawing board on that. And I've determined that the only way for the board members to see these various sites that you're, that you come before you is to, for the board members to attend site visits with less than a quorum, so no more than two, two by two. And with applicants' representatives on the sites. And so we rescheduled the two sightwalks for Kamoli Project and for Stone Ridge to accommodate those conditions. The bulk of the board had already seen or was recused, or couldn't make the Chase Hill Road. So it was just Emily and I out on that on Thursday, June 3. And then Stone Ridge was last Wednesday on probably the most humid day of the entire world. We were out for a couple of hours and that was John and Emily and I, along with a couple of representatives from the, the developer. So that takes care of the issue of sightwalks. So going forward, that's how it will be handled. Related to this, I, I had an inquiry via an email. And we had the question has been raised at the town council level by a member of the public concerned that concerned that he can't get an answer to a question in regards to who can attend and who can't attend. And I looked back at my response to that particular individual. And perhaps I wasn't as clear as I had intended. But the bottom line is that no members of the public were invited for any of these visits, nor will they be in the future, because we can't have a public meeting. So when the planning board members do go visit these sites, it will not be within the scope of a public meeting. It will not be in a situation where open meetings laws could be violated. So no members of the public would be necessarily invited. If an applicant wants to invite the public, that's up to them. They are not required to allow the public onto their property. And in fact, when we did attend the Stone Ridge one, I readily signed a waiver form. And I expect that that's what, if a landowner wants to let members of the public on their property, they're not required to. But if they want to let them on, the members of the public will need to understand that they're, they're signing a waiver of liability when they enter onto that property. So I apologize to that member of the public for any confusion as a result of that, of my answer in, in regards to that particular question. Second item on my report is regarding open meetings compliance. This is the same individual was also concerned and has expressed these concerns most recently at the town council meeting that, that I, as the new solicitor, have implemented new procedure and a new process here in regards to board members answering questions and speaking to members of the public. All I can say to you is that if, if the compliance with open meetings is a new thing for this board, then I'm glad I'm here to tell you that you do need to comply with it. So I haven't implemented anything new. I've advised the board on their requirements under both public records access as well as open meetings. And obviously, open meetings is the one that the board members deal with most frequently. And so I will reiterate for the board's edification, as well as members of the public, what the requirements are for the board. The board members are required to have all discussions regarding a pending application in the public forum. So that means here at a meeting. And members of the public can certainly email the, the planning office. They can send a letter to the planning office. They can attend the meetings, both virtually, and then when we get back to in person there as well. But that's the forum and the location where questions need to be answered for any pending application. It's not appropriate for a board member to in a grocery store, restaurant, or in their home email respond to questions from members of the public, or an applicant, or an objector on a pending application. It's a violation of open meetings, and it's not permissible. So to the extent that that, I have not been clear on that, I apologize for anyone who's been confused. But that is not my role. That's state law. And it's important that we all are cognizant of it. And if it implements a change for way, maybe things were done a little more informally, I don't know. I wasn't here. But it, that's my obligation is to advise you on how to do it going forward. So in, associated with that, I also do not respond generally to emails. I work for the town, the planning department. And I'm not instructed to, or authorized, if you will, to respond to miscellaneous emails from members of the public. On occasion, I might. But generally speaking, if a member of the public has a question for the solicitor, that needs to go through the planning department and be authorized by the town, because the town is expending funds when, when I respond to any questions. So I, I hope I've cleared that up for anyone who was confused about. To any questions, so I, I hope I've cleared that up for anyone who was confused about. How this works. All questions to the planning board members should be going through, not directly to them at their, their emails, they should be going. Through the planning department, everyone is invited to ask whatever questions they would like to, but they, they, does need to be done within the scope of a, of a public meeting. So I hope I've made that clear, and finally, the last item on the agenda is the revenue appeal was rescheduled yet again. Due to the availability of a sitting board member, I do believe that we are. Scheduled for next Thursday, June 24th. Again via Zoom, so other than that, I don't have anything further.
Maggie, thank you very much, educational as always. Next item on the agenda is the planners' report.
Nothing to report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, next item on the agenda is correspondence and updates, I see none before us. Next item on the agenda is public forum. Anyone in the audience wishing to. Ask those questions that were previously alluded to, this would be your opportunity. I see no hands. Is nobody listening to us tonight? No, anyway. No, nothing in public forum. Next item on the agenda is the date of the next regular meeting, which is July 7th. And if there's nothing that can legitimately come before us, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
This is Polly, a quick question, so with our start time for the meeting on the 7th, going to be 6:00 PM or 7:00 PM?
6:00 PM.
All right.
There it is.
I didn't include it on the agenda because I wasn't sure and I didn't want to put out information that was incorrect, but. The agenda for that, it will include the start time.
Thank you very much.
We do have notices out, I'm not sure exactly what the notices say. We, you know, in a bonus of caution, we could start at 7:00, I guess. If we start at 6:00 and somebody's of the impression we, on the impression we start at 7:00, I don't want them to miss out on anything. Rather have them wait an hour. But, but again, I'll tell you, we, with what we have on the agenda, we need. We need every bit of time we can get, so I would.
Listen, you got us coming twice a month, you may as well start it at 6:00 o'clock.
Just confirm, Jimmy, you have a good point though, confirm, I know that was, was Mr. Craven, there was a notice problem, they had the wrong, wrong town at the last. Last month and they're, I believe they're coming on the 7th, correct?
Correct.
So we would want to make sure, so, you know, worst case scenario, we can start the meeting at 6:00, we would, and his thing would start, wouldn't start before 7:00 if he's noticed it for 7:00.
Correct.
Okay, so we could handle something else before we got to him.
Besides, the agenda really hasn't even been finalized yet and. And it's not a, yeah, it's not a special meeting, it's a regular meeting, so. Well. I, I guess, would you say that we're only required to post the agenda with the time on that? I mean, do we really have to definitively say something right now about the start time?
No, no, you, you can, you can decide it afterwards and certainly, but you have to post it obviously.
Correct.
But you just want to make sure that you've. That your stars are aligned with anybody else who's already sent out notices, because I would imagine those notices are. If, if they haven't gone out, they're going out any moment.
Right, and we're going to start off with a couple of projects that have been before us several times anyway, so, and we have. Do, so I, I say 6:00 o'clock.
6:00 o'clock it is. Okay, I was in the middle of entertaining a motion to adjourn.
I keep there, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
This is Emily, I'll second.
I have a second, we'll further discussion. All in favor, Diorio, yes.
And below, yes.
Light, yes.
Chomshinha, yes.
John Pennybacker, yes.
Okay, very good, thank you very much, appreciate your time. Everybody have a good night.